Good afternoon. I would like to call to order the Pierce County Council in a special meeting in Council District Number Five. The date is June 30th, 2025, and the time is 6:03. If the clerk could please call the roll. Councilmember Morel?
Here.
Councilmember Herrera?
Here.
Councilmember Crowver?
Here.
Councilmember Ayala?
Here.
Councilmember Yambay?
Here.
Councilmember Denson?
Here.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Here.
You have seven members present? We do have a quorum. Thank you all for joining us this evening. This is a beautiful facility. A tradition and requirement of the charter is that we go to each of the seven council districts, and tonight, the Chair of the meeting will be District Five, Representative Councilmember Brian Yambay. So I'm going to pass this over to him, and then I get to sit back and enjoy the show. Councilmember Yambay?
Thank you, Ma'am Chair. All right. So let's see. We'll move on to item number three, the Pledge of Allegiance and a Moment of Silence and Land Acknowledgement. So, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a Moment of Silence dedicated to the men and women serving overseas in the military, and then I will read the land acknowledgement. Please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the free public, to the justice, to our nation, to our ground, to the citizens, to the religion of this We acknowledge that we are on the traditional homelands of the Coast Salish tribes. Coast Salish people have lived on and stewed these lands since time immemorial and continue to do so today. We recognize that this land acknowledgement is one small step toward true allyship, and we commit to uplifting the voices, experiences, and histories of the indigenous people of this land. Next, we will turn to Ms. Long to cite the charter requirement and explain the purpose of this special council meeting.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm Susan Long, and I serve as a chief counsel to the Pierce County Council. The Pierce County Charter provides that the council shall hold at least one evening meeting in each of the seven council districts each year, and so tonight, the council is here in District Five in compliance with that charter requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Long. I would like to ask staff to introduce themselves and invite my council colleagues to each introduce themselves in the areas of the county they represent.
I'm Stephanie Cole, Clerk to the Council.
Hi, Susan Long, Council to the Council.
Carrie Waterland. Wow, my name. Carrie Waterland, Principal Policy Analyst for the Council.
Jair Winesbury, Communications Coordinator.
Well, I'll start it off by saying, welcome to my district, District Five, which is northeast Tacoma, Browns Point, Tide Flats, Port of Tacoma, Five Heights, Fife, Summit Waller, Midland, Parkland, parts of Spanaway, the city of Fife, and Five Heights. And welcome, my colleagues, Brian Yambay, Council District Five. Let's go to Robin on the end.
Thank you, Chair Yambay. I'm Robin Denson. I'm the council member for District Seven, which is North Tacoma, West Tacoma, the town of Ruston, and then everything on the other side of the Tacoma Narrows Bridge, so Gig Harbor, Keppinsla, and Fox Island. This is a lovely facility, and thanks for having us tonight.
Hello, everybody. I'm Paul Herrera, Pierce County Council, District Two, and that area includes Edgewood, Milton, Sumner, Puyallup, and South Hill, and it's good to be here today.
Good evening, everybody. I have the honor and pleasure of representing District Six, which is the other side of Parkland. So you could walk to my district, but it's a little warm tonight. And, oh, and my name is Janie Hitchens, sorry. And I also represent Lakewood, Dupont, Silicon, Ketron, and Anderson, and McNeil Island, and then the base.
Good evening. I'm Dave Morell. I represent District One. District One takes in unincorporated part of South Hill, goes out to Graham, drops down into the valley, got pretty much all the valley, and then I make my way up to Bonnie Lake, Lake Taps, and then over to Buckley, and then I've got all the small little towns, South Prairie, Wilkerson, Carbonado, and so it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosie Ayala, representing District Four, which is the rest of Tacoma that has not been mentioned yet, along with University Place and Burress. Very excited to be here.
And I am Amy Crowver. I represent the Third Council District. I have the Wild West Side of Graham, which includes the cherished Frontier Park, and headed on south on out to Mount Rainier, and in between I have Kapousen. From Mount Rainier, heading back, Elbe, and Ashford, and Eatonville, that is my only town. Headed on to McKenna, up through Roy, my only city, and then through Spanaway, I have the Spanaway Lake and Park, but not the Sprinkers. Then headed over through Frederickson and back around to Meridian, headed down to Graham on the west side. Thank you very much. Glad to be here today.
Thank you to my council colleagues for introductions. Let's see, we are now at item number four, which is approval of our agenda. Are there any objections to today's agenda as presented? Okay. Seeing no objection, the agenda is approved. So following tonight's presentations, there will be an opportunity for public comment under community forum. So each speaker is allowed three minutes, and all comments shall be directed to the Chair. For the rules of public participation, please review the bottom of the first page of today's agenda. Now, we're moving to item number five, messages from the executive and other elected officials present. And it looks like we do have Executive Mello in attendance, and invite you to speak.
Well, thank you, Chair Yambay. Good evening, councilmembers. It's really great to see all of you. For the record, my name is Ryan Mello. I serve as the Pierce County Executive, representing all the people of Pierce County. Thanks for bringing your in-district meeting to this beautiful school and auditorium, and thank you to the good partners at Franklin Pierce Schools for hosting us. Chair Yambay, I just have a couple of updates here that are really specific to your district. The first is to thank you for joining me and the Parks Team this last weekend in opening up the new amenities at Orange Gate Park, and also the extension of the Pipeline Trail. We were joined not only by you and your remarks, thank you for your thoughtful remarks during the opening groundbreak ribbon-cutting ceremony, but also Councilmember Ayala and Councilmember Crowver were able to join us. Thank you for taking time to be with us. Part of what we were celebrating was the extension of the Pipeline Trail, which now can take you from the Tacoma Dome, where that trail ended at East Seventy Second Street. Now you can get all the way to Waller Road East, to the entrance of Orange Gate Park, because of this 1.3-mile trail extension, which is, takes you completely out of the harms way of traffic, to safely bicycle, or stroll, or walk and run. It's a beautiful trail, and we also opened up other amenities at Orange Gate Park, including a restroom, parking, and other trails in the park to give more folks more access throughout this park. Many equestrians use this park, and other folks from all throughout the region. So it was a great day to open another trail extension and improvements to our awesome park system in Pierce County. It also set us up for Phase Two of the Pipeline Trail Extension. So Phase Two is known as the Fruitland to Half Dollar Park section. So this is going to be about a two-mile extension that'll take us from Orange Gate Park to Fruitland in Puyallup, into Councilmember Herrera's district. And this trail is just another great example of connecting many different communities in a non-motorized way for folks to live healthier lives and be able to recreate and be with families in a great and safe way. So thanks again for being with us. Secondly, speaking of parks, and since we're in the summer season, our Parks Department works really hard to create really fun activities, especially for young people, especially when, you know, most folks have parents working hard, and they're often looking for things for kids to do that are free or low cost. Our Parks Department has arranged for many different camps and clinics, ways for kids to be on adventure and continue to learn during the summer and have fun. So if anyone's interested, you can go to the Pierce County Parks website, but there are camps for kids of all ages. There's a Bricks for Kids Legos Camp. I hear it sells out quickly. There's a Deep Roots Day Camp, which is more of an environmental outdoor education camp. There's the Eco Explorers Adventure Summer Camp, the Pierce Summer Life Camp, designed for teens. There are various sports summer camps for basketball, soccer, golf, flag football, ultimate frisbee, and other sports for young people to learn some athletic skills and team-building skills. And there's also ice skating camps. So encourage folks to remember Pierce County Parks as a place to have fun all summer long, especially if families are looking for places for kiddos to be able to spend time, middle-school age kids, elementary-school age kids, and high school kids. In closing, Chair Yambay, I know you've heard about this from me before, but many of your constituents haven't had the chance yet. Pierce County Parks is a great place to go to look for activities for young people this summer. We've also put together a website that tries to pull together all of the different county-wide resources, places where nonprofit organizations and others have free and low-cost things for kids to do this summer, YMCA's, and Boys and Girls Clubs, and other park districts from throughout the county. So if you Googled "youth to thrive Pierce County," again, you just go to your search engine, I use Google, you can go to your search engine and go to "youth to thrive Pierce County." We try to curate as many of the different activities as we can find that are out there, and it's just a really efficient place to go to find safe, fun things to do. Many of them have free food and for dinner for young people at night during the summertime, and it's just really one of our many efforts to help make sure that families are well taken care of and kids have safe, fun things to do all summer long. So encourage families to go to Google "youth to thrive Pierce County" and find something that might work for their family. Thanks again for having your in-district meeting here in beautiful Parkland, and with our partners in Franklin Pierce School District. I'm looking forward to the rest of the learning. Thank you, Chair Yambay.
Thank you, Mr. Executive. All right. So, let me see. We will actually, we'll just go into our welcome message from the Franklin Pierce Schools and Franklin Pierce Family Resource Center. So Carrie, would you be able to take this away?
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Chair and members of the council, for the record, Carrie Waterland, staff for the council. Tonight, you have a welcome message that's provided from Franklin Pierce Schools and the Franklin Pierce Family Resource Center. You'll have two people speaking to you tonight, and I wanted to let you know that these speakers, as well as many of our other speakers, have provided some takeaways on the table outside. So please check those out as you're listening to the speakers. There are flyers out there that you can take with you. First, we do have from Franklin Pierce Schools, I will let her tell you her new role, but Claudia Miller, Family and Community Partnerships. And after her will be Blanca Sagasistado, who is the Family Resource Navigator here at the Franklin Pierce Family Resource Center. So without further ado, Mr. Chair, I pass it back to you for the welcome message.
Thank you. And Claudia, you can take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Yambay, and members of the council and valued community members. It is a true honor to welcome you to our beautiful Performing Arts Center, a space that was designed not only for student learning and creative expression, but also for gatherings like this that reflect and celebrate the heart of our community here in Council District Five and across our Franklin Pierce Schools community. My name is Claudia Miller. I've had the privilege of serving as the Director of Family and Community Partnerships for Franklin Pierce Schools, and tonight, I'm grateful for the opportunity to tell a little bit of our story. Franklin Pierce Schools is home to nearly 7,000 students and their families across 14 schools from early learning to high school. But these numbers only begin to tell a story, a small bit of the story of who we are. What truly defines us is the incredible strength and the richness of our community. Our students and our families represent over 40 different languages and dialects. Along with a wide array of cultures and traditions, this mosaic of lived experience brings deep insight into our classrooms, our neighborhoods, and shared spaces, something we deeply cherish in Franklin Pierce. Here in completely unincorporated Pierce County, schools often serve as more than educational institutions. They are trusted anchors, places families turn to for stability, connection, and care. While we know our capacity is limited, we've leaned into something far more powerful, the gift of partnership. By working hand in hand with our community, we've learned we can meet one another with dignity and compassion and shared purpose. This evening, so thank you for being here, I wanted to share a little bit of the history of the Franklin Pierce Family Resource Center, and then Blanca Sagasistado, our wonderful Family Resource Navigator, will share a little more detail of the impact of this work. In the fall of 2020, during the height of the pandemic, the truth became clearer than ever. We were 13 weeks into delivering weekend food bags that our partners at our Savior Lutheran Church were putting together for us, and were distributed to over 260 students across our community. Every Friday, volunteers showed up without fail, former Council County Marty Campbell, the late Tacoma City Councilmember Catherine Ushka, State Representative Melanie Morgan, Charlotte Mena, staff from our local community partners at Amara, our Franklin Pierce Schools staff and educators, and members from across our community from our faith-based organizations. Their steady presence reminded us that we were not alone, that a strong caring network already existed around us in our community. Those weeks sparked a bigger question for us. What more could we do together to support families in a way they told us they needed us to? From that question, we shared, and from our shared strength, the vision of the Family Resource Center was born. We began bringing together trusted community partners who believed in this vision. First five fundamentals helped us imagine what a diaper bank could be in this county. Pierce County Health Department and the United Way of Pierce County joined us as contributors. Eloise's Cooking Pot was one of our first food pantry items that we provided in our diaper bank out of a lobby in one of our conference rooms. We're especially grateful to our County Council Chair Hitchens and former council member Marty Campbell for their steadfast support that helped build momentum, and to our Superintendent Dr. Lance Goodpastor and our Franklin Pierce Schools District Staff, Community, and Board. Thank you for taking a bold step in prioritizing families and investing in this work before we had the blueprint of what it looked like. Your trust allowed us to say yes again and again. By the spring, we welcomed Blanca to our staff. She's our incredible Family Resource Navigator, and you'll be able to hear from her soon. Her warm presence and deep care, we began serving families from a small conference room, like I said, offering diapers and food occasionally, and a listening ear, really. And in 2022, we moved into our more formal space that is now in the main entrance of the district office, and continued to grow both in purpose and possibility there. Last summer, our Pancon Cafe parent group, which Blanca will tell you a little bit more about, co-designed and painted a mural in the center with a local artist, Cy Ray. They chose flowers, butterflies, and hummingbirds. When we asked them about what their design meant, they shared, "The Family Resource Center is the flowers. We are the butterflies and the hummingbirds. You give us nourishment, and in return, we help pollinate and spread beauty." Their story captures exactly what we hope the center represents, a place where families are not just supported, but they're seen, they're heard, and they get to flourish. To our partners, councilmembers, district staff, and most especially, our families, we thank you. Thank you for walking alongside us, for believing in the power of connection, and for helping create a space rooted in collective care. It is my great pleasure to introduce Blanca Sagasistado, who's our Family Resource Navigator, who will share more about the services that we provide day in and day out to our families, and from our open door to your, from our open door to your open hearts, thank you for being part of our shared journey in Franklin Pierce.
Thank you, Claudia. It has been an honor being with you, having you as my leadership. This is, I'll miss you. Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos. My name is Blanca Sagasistado, and I've had the privilege of serving as a Family Resource Navigator for Franklin Pierce for about four years. In that time, I had the opportunity and honor of walking alongside families and my leadership team through both joyful and challenging seasons, and I've witnessed the incredible strength, compassion, and care that lives in this community. Our Family Resource Center is one of the family, one of 10 Family Resource Centers in Pierce County. Since we began, we help distribute over 1 million diapers to our families in our community, but that's just one small part of this story. We also host a food pantry that offers not just nutritious meals, but culturally meaningful foods, ensuring families feel nourished in every sense of the word. Alongside that, we provide hygiene items and household goods, thanks to the ongoing support of partners like our Savior Lutheran and Raising Girls, and so many others who show up with generosity and with heart. These resources, diapers, food, essentials, are often the first step, but they open the door to something deeper. They open the door to trust, relationships, and connection to more sustainable support. Often, a parent will come in need of formula, diapers, food, housing, and that visit turns into a conversation about applying for basic food, and I'm proud to say that our Family Resource Center, Franklin Pierce, is one of the leading numbers to support families applying for basic food, cash, and childcare, and about assessing also Medicaid, medical coverage, and employment support. One small moment of support can lead to a life-changing support, and that's the heart of what we do. We also understand how important it is to support families and their parenting journey. We facilitate parenting classes. Triple Peak is Positive Parenting Program to our families and our community, not just Franklin Pierce, but anyone in our community, any parents that want to participate in the parenting classes can participate. We also provide the Incredible Years Program, and I can give you some examples of how the parenting classes have impacted our families. I have one family, one of many, that the, both parents, they're usually moms are the ones that come to the family, to the parenting classes because of, you know, dad is working late, but these parents came together, and they came with this worry that his, their kid was, he was depressed, or he didn't want to play soccer. When before, they would call him messy, and she said, you know, "We need support. We don't know what to do with him. How do we take him out of his room? He just wants to be in his room." So with the help of this parenting classes, and they learn how to create contacts with him, we found a resource where he found treatment, and now, after the treatment, he is a missionary. He is a missionary for his church, and what, I mean, this is the impact that the Family Resource Centers through parenting classes can provide for our community. And that was, oh, and then this, so the families that come to our Family Resource Center, they want to, they're hungry for connection, you know, with other parents. So in 2023, we decided to create this support group. It's called Pancon Cafe. It's sweets and coffee. I mean, who doesn't want to do that? Just hang out, and I always tell them, "Come and hang out with me and drink coffee and have some cake." And out of this 20 families, another example that how the Family Resource Centers support our community is by social connection. One of our families was moving to a different state, a different state, and our Family Resource Center, our group, decided to support them by providing clothing, gas cars for their journey. And what a, what a best way to support each other than to say, "Hey, we're here for you, not just to listen to you, but, you know, this is what we have, and this is what we can give you." So what started as a single gathering became, you know, this is like a community care, and anyone in our community can come to the Pancon Cafe group. So this is what makes the Family Resource Center so special. It is not just a program or a service that we provide. It's a space where families experience dignity, trust, and mutual care. Thank you so much for allowing me to share just a glimpse of what's possible when we invest in relationships, listen with empathy, and walk alongside one another. It is my deepest joy and honor to do this work, and I'm so grateful to be part of this community. Gracias.
All right. I think Joel, did you want to say something? Okay. Well, appreciated. Thank you, Blanca, and thank you, Claudia. I do want to tell everyone in the audience that this, the way that we envisioned District Five's in-district meeting was, we're thinking of the district as a garden, and we're thinking of community as a garden that needs nurturing, that needs support, but given those proper, you know, tools, and given the proper soil, and starting an assistance that it can grow, and it can support the community around itself. So this is the ongoing theme that you'll hear. And so, and also, today is Claudia's, Miller's, last day at Franklin Pierce Schools, and we are losing her to Clover Park, which is a shame, but we really appreciate all the work and all the work that Franklin Pierce has done for taking the initiative to take care of our community out here, and it's a great model. Okay. Miss Carrie, you can introduce the next. Ms. Carrie, you can introduce the next.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the council, what you have coming up before you are three different presentations that, as the chair said today, really are focused on community health and wellness and what it takes to have a healthy community. First up, you'll be hearing from the Executive Director, Quina Tuppo, and the Public Policy Lead, Krista Timm, both from the Blue Zones Parkland Spanaway. And without further ado, Mr. Chair, I will pass it back to you so that you can start the presentation.
All right. So, Quina, I'll pass it off to you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chair Yambay, council, and community members for the opportunity to share about the Blue Zones Project. My name is Quina Tuppo. I have the honor of serving as the Executive Director for the Blue Zones Project that is focused on Parkland Spanaway. I also have Krista Timm, who is our Public Policy Lead, that will also share about the great work she's doing around policy. So the Blue Zones Project is made possible because of the sponsorship of our amazing county multi-care and Virginia Mason-Franiscan Health. We wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the partnership of these organizations to come together to develop this community-wide well-being initiative. And for those of you who are not familiar with the Blue Zones Project, it's a community-wide well-being initiative focused on making Parkland Spanaway a healthy community. We do that by engaging all the ways that people live, work, play, and engage in this community. And it leverages lessons from areas of the world that are Blue Zones regions, and it uses measurable improvement to drive healthy initiatives in the community. Sorry that that does not look correct, but these are the areas of the world. There are about six, currently you're seeing five. The newest Blue Zone is Singapore. And we, for some of you may have seen the Netflix docu-series that is based off of the work of the Blue Zones Project. We take our learnings from these areas, and you can go to the next slide, and we implement our work through the Power 90. These are the lessons that we focus on in helping community members live better, longer lives. So this Core Four, where we want to help community members in Parkland Spanaway move, have the right outlook, eat wisely, and connect in community. And on this next slide, this is the way that we're engaging in the community, utilizing that Life Radius Model where I mentioned before, this is all the areas around a person's home and where they spend most of their time. And we execute this work through this next slide with focusing on people, places, and policy. So these are the three pillars in which my team executes their work. Around our work with people, the goal of this work is to improve the well-being of individuals living here in Parkland Spanaway. We want the results of better health and increased quality of life and longevity that remind them of home. So we do this through our engagement with civic and faith-based organizations. We encourage folks to move, discover their purpose, eat better, and make new friends. Our second pillar is our places work. This is where we work with organizations across schools, work sites, restaurants, grocery stores. Our work with schools, including Franklin Pierce School District and Bethel School District. We hope to cultivate a healthy holistic environment academically, psychologically, socially, and physically in order for students to be successful in and outside of the classroom. For work sites, we work with work sites with the goal of creating a workplace culture and environment that supports improved health and well-being initiatives for all employees at that work site. For restaurants, we increase healthy menu options, working alongside those restaurants that are offered and consumed while maintaining healthy profit margins for that restaurant. And then working with grocery stores, our goal is to increase the sale of water, fruits, vegetables, and healthy plant-based foods in grocery stores, leading to an increase in consumption of fruits and vegetables. And that last pillar there, policy, this is where we work alongside our county representatives, where we want to increase and enhance around built environment to promote and increase routine daily movement, social connection, and overall well-being through an environment that is supportive of routine walking, bicycling, and community engagement. Around food systems, our work focuses on increasing access, quality, and quantity of nutritious food in the places where Parkland and Spanaway residents live, learn, work, and play, including changing the systems and policies involved in food environments. Other policy work includes tobacco and alcohol. Our goal is to reduce excessive drinking, enhance public safety programs, and encourage excessive and underage, or sorry, discourage. We don't want to encourage, not encourage, discourage underage drinking to increase physical, financial, and environmental well-being. With tobacco, decrease the use of all types of tobacco, vaping, and other smoke products in Parkland-Spanaway community, increasing well-being for a happier, healthier community. So this is the way that we're doing this work. And we're not able to execute and be able to engage in community without working with, collectively with the partners throughout Parkland and Spanaway. There's a saying in my culture, "It's ele olima, emama, aisi avena", which translates to "Many hands make the burdens lighter". And we truly believe that as a Blue Zones Project Parkland-Spanaway team, we're not here to duplicate efforts. We're here to support those amazing organizations and community members that are already doing their great work, uplifting those organizations and coming in as a partner to support and create a healthier environment for folks that live here in Parkland-Spanaway. And so next, I'll talk a little bit about our governance structure and the way that we operate. We do have a governance committee that is made up of members from each of our sponsors. Thank you to Councilmember Jenny Hitchens, Councilmember Brian Yambay, that represent the county council on our council. We also have a steering committee that is made up of partner representatives throughout the community. We meet quarterly to address some of the needs of Parkland and Spanaway. And then we also have policy committees, which include built environment, food systems, tobacco and alcohol. School committees that we attend, again, we're not here to duplicate, so we just attend those great organizations that are already within the school. So Franklin Pierce School District's Youth First Committee, we attend those to see how we can support. And then Bethel Community Service. And our Restaurant Grocery Work Site Committee is in process because work sites typically advance their own work site well-being committee within their organizations. And we're just kicking off our work with grocery stores and restaurants in this year. On this next slide, you'll see just all of the members throughout this community that are committed to helping us advance our work. That includes members from both school districts, PLU, our county council, both health systems, to make sure that we're aligning with all of the goals of these organizations and working together to support the residents that live here in Parkland-Spanaway. So our impact to date, we are just wrapping up our second year of the Blue Zones Project work here at the end of August, which we're, you know, really excited to move into our third year. We have engaged over 2,280 residents. This is unique individual residents. That means that we have had multiple touchpoints with them throughout our time working in the community, but this is unique individuals. And we've engaged them through multiple activities and initiatives. We've also worked with 32 local organizations implementing Blue Zones principles. So we have four work sites that are Blue Zones approved, six, four schools that are Blue Zones approved, one restaurant, and one partner organization. We have six work sites heading towards approval, four schools, six restaurants, two grocery stores, and four partner orgs. So you can imagine, we're a very busy team, working alongside all of these organizations to change the health and well-being of those organizations. We also have a robust volunteer program with 40 active volunteers and have hosted nine volunteers to date. We've held over 50 community events, not on our own, but also in partnership with multiple organizations. And we've done this work to expand healthy food access, safe infrastructure, mental health awareness programs through our partnerships with, through with all of our sponsors and the great organizations that are here in Parkland-Spanaway. And so I'm going to dive into those pillars that I mentioned before. So this just highlights a little bit of the great work that we've already done in community. With our people pillar, and this is our individual engagement, we've launched a financial wellness series in partnership with Habitat for Humanity. And this was in partnership to connect folks to those 80 homes that are available here through the Habitat for Humanity Home Ownership Program. We have now four families on their way towards homeownership. So we're really grateful for that partnership and to be able to focus on financial wellness. This was a call out from members in the community of what they wanted here in Parkland-Spanaway. So we're thankful to Habitat for Humanity for partnering with us on that. Spanaway Community Resource Caravan is at Spanaway United Methodist Church, which is a safe parking space location for our unhoused residents. We wanted to make sure we were also reaching our unhoused community in this collaboration with Spanaway United Methodist Church, as well as Spanaway, as well as Multicultural Child and Family Hope Center. We provide resources for those that attend every third Thursday of the month. Spanaway United Methodist Church provides food as well as shower services and laundry services, which is a great way to bring in other organizations to reach our unhoused residents. Our Healthy Living Series is a partnership with Pierce County Parks and Rec. And this is a great opportunity for connection at no cost to residents in this community, where they can engage in zumba, yoga, line dancing, and healthy cooking demonstrations. Now, this is all community-driven. And so we were asked recently for line dancing, and we found a line dancing instructor and just launched that this year. Again, we are keeping our ears to the ground of what the community wants to see as a way for them to connect and work with these partners to launch these programs. So we're really excited to have that program continue through the rest of the year and next year. And then recently launched a partnership with AREVA to provide healthy Blue Zones-inspired meals for the students in their summer ceramics program. They were struggling to financially support meals for those students that engage in that program. And so we were proud to walk alongside them and provide those healthy nutritious meals for those students, where they can also learn about the Blue Zones principles. Our Local Heroes Unite campaign really encourages volunteerism here in Parkland-Spanaway. And then finally, our Blue Zones Fellows Program is a partnership with PLU Social Work Program. You see that we're engaging in multiple organizations, and we can't do this alone. And there are great students at PLU that we can work alongside. And so those, this fellow program provides an immersive experience for the PLU students who are passionate about community well-being. And we will have one student start with us in the fall with the goal of having students move forward and work with our partner organizations on their community well-being initiatives in the next phase of this program. And then, of course, you can see all of our great activities there. And then our places work, I really want to recognize Franklin Pierce School District just for their partnership of working alongside us in our work with places. So we know that the schools make up a lot of the work that we need to do here in Parkland and Spanaway. And Franklin Pierce School District has been that great partner for us. And so our healthy cooking demonstrations, where we worked with Ferkdale Elementary School, the fifth graders were telling us that they make meals for some of their siblings. And some of them also use ingredients from the food pantries. And so alongside Virginia Mason-Franiscan Health, we went in, spent the day with all of the fifth graders, teaching them how to make a healthy nutritious meal, just utilizing a microwave and items that they can find at their local food pantry. We've also are currently in the process alongside Franklin Pierce School District, Kins Mental Health Pierce County, and communities and schools to launch a youth advisory council and a youth-led provider summit with work sites. We've launched water walking MOIs, and that was just to address how do you stay active in those winter months? We know it's cold, it's rainy, and so PLU was gracious enough, not only to open up their pool for their staff, but also for residents in the community to utilize that space during those winter months. The yoga series for PLU staff was great for the middle of the day break for them to be able to engage in a quick 30-minute movement activity where they can also downshift during the day. And then National Walking Day in partnership with Collins Elementary. This event not only promoted physical activity, but it also raised awareness and the importance about safe routes to school, especially for Collins Elementary, where there isn't any safe routes for the students to walk to school. So we, we actually, instead of identifying safe routes around that elementary school, we utilized their track for the students to walk in the morning alongside their teachers. Collins Elementary will now be going into the new school year, hosting a walking event every morning for the kids to move, sorry, not every morning, once a month for the kids to move, and we'll host it around a different activity. But we're excited that they are, the students asked for it, and they're going to continue that program. And then alongside our Pierce County Environmental Services, we hosted fifth grade field trips for all of the fifth graders across the entire Franklin Pierce School District, where students have the opportunity to explore and learn how to grow their own food, as well as learning how to harvest and prepare herbal teas. So that was a fun-filled activity for the students that we just wrapped up here in the last couple of weeks. In the future, our next steps are to launch this work with Bethel School District. And so Bethel School District will kick a lot of this work off in the fall, similar to what we're doing with Franklin Pierce School District. And so looking forward to partnering alongside Bethel School District to help their students as well and to continue this work alongside multiple organizations. And I will invite Krista Timm, our Policy Lead, to share more about the policy pillars, since she's been instrumental in executing this work.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here today. I'm very excited to talk about policy. Some of the policy things that I'm very excited about is in March, we launched our countywide food policy council. So this food policy council is made up of different sectors, from hunger relief system, people who support agriculture, small farmers, bigger farmers, people who do distribution for food wholesale. And so this council is coming together to build a strategic plan that we're hoping to finish in August. Some of the goals that has been identified by the council is increasing access to food, doing food rescue, so when food is at the grocery store, how can we save it before it goes to the landfill? We're also looking to boost local production. And the second one I'm really excited, sorry. The second one I'm really excited about is we're with, in partnership with Franklin Pierce School District and Cascadia Youth Mental Health, we're working to assess and do an audit of school use, school policies around substance use violations. So when a student is caught with substances, what is currently happening? And how can we do alternatives to suspension and do a wraparound care service and increase cessation services as well in the schools? We're also partnered with Pierce County Parks to update their Parks and Rec Open Space Plan. So we noticed that there was a gap in data, so we partnered with Women's of Leader, Leaders in Women's Health and Pancon Cafe to amplify community voices regarding park safety and access. We're also partnering with Bethel School District and Pierce County to host and Spanaway United Methodist Church to launch Safety Town. So Safety Town is a temporary traffic garden set up to teach elementary school kids about pedestrian and bike safety skills. So how can they use a roundabout? How can they use a crosswalk? I'm really excited about this event. It's going to take place August 22nd from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And that's for any elementary school parents or youth. And then we're also, there's a discovery report, and the data showed that Parkland and Spanaway residents are not proud to be from here. So we decided to launch Parkland with Purpose and Spanaway Roots Run Deep. This is a media campaign to increase community pride. So we're hoping to partner with Parks and Rec, planning and public works to just kind of incorporate little pops of color here and there. There's going to be a social media campaign, and I'm just really excited to see what that holds. And as Quina said, there's a lot of work that'd be done here, but we can't do this without you. So on the next slide is our contact information. If anybody has any organizations that they want us to work with, grocery stores, restaurants, or their own organization to talk about well-being or any policy work, feel free to email one of us. We're also hiring a marketing and engagement lead, so if anybody is interested, feel free to contact Quina or Tammy about that.
Thank you.
And sorry, last slide, we put a QR code up here, all of our addresses. We put a QR code up here. All of our events are free. So, we'd love to have you join us for some community events. And thank you again for having us share about our work. We're very excited to be here.
Thank you, Quina, and thank you, Krista, for that informative presentation. Anyone have any questions, Councilor? Oh, Councilmember Denson.
Thank you, Chair. This may be more comments, but amazing work. Thank you. Thank you so much. This is cool, and I just love the collaborations and the partnerships. And you do have to be careful about different organizations feeling maybe threatened. So, you spoke to that, and it sounds like you just handle that really well, and you're a trusted organization, which, you know, speaks a lot for you all. Really enjoyed some of the things that you just mentioned about the policy work. You know, no surprise, we're very into policy. I would be very interested, and my colleagues probably would as well, to see the results of your substance abuse policy audit. That's something that all of our school districts are dealing with, so please share that when you get that, because, yeah, I'd be interested in seeing that. Love the marketing campaign. It's so important that people are proud of where they're from. And there's so much to love about this area, so that's an amazing idea. And then, the last thing I'll just mention is, not to put any more work on your plate, but in all of your efforts, if there is policies that the county can impose or work on that supports you all, I know that you've got amazing council members you partner with, so let us know. But I know that a lot of times, probably some of the barriers that you're running up against or the challenges you identify are probably more state-oriented. And I just want you to know that we can help with that, too. We have a legislative agenda. We love to advocate on behalf of our local community. So, if you're identifying something, because you are really, really on the ground, working hard on these issues, please let us know so that we can help you help the community. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson.
Any other council member questions or comments? All right. Thank you. All right, let's move on to Item B, Community. Item B, Community Gardens and Local Harvest Programs. Ms. Wireland.
Wonderful. Thank you again, Mr. Chair. We do have a little bit of a friendly amendment to the agenda in front of you. Kristin sends her regrets, was not able to make it. But we do have a wonderful other speaker that's coming in for you. Dana Coggan, the Executive Director of the Pierce Conservation District is here, along with Lex Bernard, who is an AmeriCorps Gleaning Specialist and Coordinator of Community Garden at the Franklin Pierce Farm and Seed Library. They are both here to talk with you about Harvest Pierce County, which is a program of the Pierce Conservation District. And without further ado, pass it back.
Good evening, Chair Yambay, I like saying that, and council members and community members. Again, as was just stated, I'm not Kristin. I'm a little bit shorter and a little bit rounder. But I'm still part of the team here. So, I am the Executive Director for the Pierce Conservation District. And we have five core programs, and I'm told that I'm not supposed to have a favorite. But don't tell the other programs, this one might be one of my favorites, one of my five favorites. So, I get to dote on our Harvest Pierce County program. This program has been a program that's been around our region for over 15 years. And in fact, it was brought over to the Pierce Conservation District by Chair Mello when he was the Executive Director of the Pierce Conservation District. It was noted that there was a big gap in food accessibility for many members of our community, and that many members of our community maybe didn't want to be big-time farmers, but still wanted to have an opportunity to have fresh food at their table. I often say that our core programs in the Pierce Conservation District are farms, food, forest, fish, and friends. And the Harvest Pierce County program actually hits on almost all of those components. The main key for the Harvest Pierce County program is to grow and share the bounty of our own backyards and our community spaces. We believe that food access is a human right, and we believe that having just a little piece of land to touch can help change the trajectory of everything we do as a community. I'm sure that many of you might, well, I'm not sure, but hopefully, many of you like gardening. If you don't, though, we can still help with that, too. If you haven't fallen in love with gardening yet, we'll get you there. Next slide. Our work as the Harvest Pierce County team is to engage community members, every community member all over Pierce County. We believe that everybody has the right and dignity to grow and tend their own gardens and eat food with their community members and to share that food. We know that sharing food is an intrinsic space of gathering, connection, and growing as community. Our work has focused around smaller community gardens that bring neighborhoods together. We work in areas where there's the intersection of healthy food, healthy community, healthy environments, leading to a healthy society. We know that our role is to engage our community in not just the work of conversation about gardening, but the actual sweat equity of gardening, too. We help build gardens, we help tend gardens, and we help educate others about how to tend gardens. But in reality, we learn more from our community than we teach them. We work with immigrant communities. We work with communities who are literally just getting here and trying to find their roots, and we help them plant roots within our own parks, our own greenways, and spaces that we get to share together. I'm excited because I've already gotten to hear from some of my heroes in our region, and specifically here in District Five. I know that we have worked with the Franklin Pierce Schools to actually have our beautiful garden at their facility. They've graciously opened up their space for us to do trainings every single week and to host a community garden that Lex is actually in charge of helping engage and motivate people to spend time in. Next slide. The core components of the Harvest Pierce County team are community gardening, gleaning, and helping engage, create, and inspire new farmers. I don't know about many of you, but I know I didn't grow up necessarily on a farm. I did work on a farm. Every summer, right about now, I was done with my high school program, and I would go out to the berry fields and start picking berries right about now. But not everybody has that opportunity. And so, we want to make sure that we bring that opportunity to folks anywhere at any time. Next slide. We're super excited to have 95 community gardens all throughout Pierce County. Now, you say, why haven't we made the next five to make it 100? Yeah, I know, that's my question, too, but we're getting there. We had this little thing called a pandemic that maybe kind of impacted some of our gardens. We lost a few, but we gained a few. And the beauty is that as we continue to grow our footprint within our community, the garden spaces also continue to grow. With those 95 gardens, we harvest almost 5,000 kilograms of food a year. That goes out to, I'm sorry, 500,000. Language is good for me. Numbers are bad. We take that food and we get that food onto the tables of our community members. We glean that food and we take it to many food banks. We even sometimes take it to some of our farmers who need a little bit of extra help feeding their hogs. And then, we also take some of that food and fruit and take it to a nice little place across the bridge that creates cider for us. So, it's a full-meal deal. Our produce is making its way through the entire region. Some of our farmers are actually producing enough food that they are now up at Pike Place Market. So, gardens from here are being moved, or the garden produce from here is being moved up into the Pike Place Market. We are an economic engine here in our own backyard through the beauty of food. We've had 14 farm businesses that have been started from our Farm Foundation's alumni. This is a class that's an intensive class that anybody can get into as long as they're willing to put in the time and help learn and grow and share their knowledge, too, about the agricultural community around us. We actually have had the great opportunity to create an incubator farm in conjunction with WSU Extension just outside of Puyallup. And I'm sorry to say, it's not quite in District Five. It's just a little in Two. Oh, no, I'm sorry, One. Oh, Dave's not paying attention. Dave. So, in District One, we have a farm. Good, there we go. Our community garden there actually teaches our members how to run a business plan. So, it's not just the structure of how to grow the food, but actually how to grow the business, how to be independent, and how to also then get their businesses to bring money back into our own communities. Next slide, please. Our community gardens are a partnership. They are not a standalone. We have partners with all kinds of different groups. One of my favorites is one of the Neighborhood Councils, the Dome Top Council. In the Dome Top neighborhood, we actually have a beautiful garden. And if you've never been there, it actually looks out over the Tacoma Dome. I know that sounds weird with its name, but it is there, and it does look out over the Tacoma Dome. And you actually have a really beautiful little, like, peak of the mountain, too. In this space, we've grown many, many different vegetables and many, many different people. This garden in particular has been one that our veterans have gone to and have helped rebuild a bunch of the garden beds. And they've found community and solace in sitting and watching the butterflies and the bees literally buzz around that space as they also buzz around and do their own work. We have 15 different community gardens right here in District Five, which is a large amount of gardens that still need your helping hands, too. So, if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to participate, make sure to email us later, and we can get you connected in with one of our gardens. Our gardens are not just the connection of the food, but we have meals together sometimes. We teach folks how to harvest the foods and preserve the seeds for the next generations to come. We know that all of our properties, that we help steward, are spaces that are on the homeland of the Puyallup, and we honor them as we grow and continue to pay homage to those who were here before us and to those who will be here for generations to come. We know that each and every one of our gardens is an extended resource. It's not just a place to come to, to look at the flowers, but to come to and ask questions, to learn language, to learn opportunities of where else to get support and services, just like you heard with the Blue Zones Group and other spaces. We all intersect, and these are spaces where we can intersect and be together. We have beautiful toolkits that we offer out and other resources that you can get either at the Conservation District, or sometimes they do get left behind in the gardens. So, if you find them there, please call us and have it returned. Next slide. Gleaning is probably one of the most impactful things that we get to do as an organization and as Harvest Pierce County. This is where we shine. This is where our community shows up, and well over 3,000 individual folks every single year who come out to help harvest our fields. We worked with the Washington State Department of Agriculture this last year to purchase coolers so that that food can have a longer shelf life. So, rather than just pulling it out of the fields and having to get it directly to someplace, we can hold it for a while and make sure it gets to the right place. Our food goes to emergency food banks, volunteers, and other value-added processors within our region, and yet again, adding funding, money, and community circles and cycles back into this region. We are exploring the opportunity to also pay some farmers for the food that we harvest. Currently, the farmers say, "Come and get it," and we say, "Thank you very much." But we also think that that's an opportunity for us to say, "How can we help with the cycle of giving back and giving back into community, too?" So, next slide. Our Farm Foundation's program is probably one of the best in the nation. I'll just say it. I'm sure there's statistics out there somewhere. But I believe for what we have, there is really just an amazing opportunity for us to educate folks. We are on our seventh year of this program. Even during the pandemic, we were able to bring people together and let folks actually work together to help learn how to grow the next cycle of foods. It's a huge opportunity and a huge blessing for us to be able to partner with the Franklin Pierce Farm on this and actually utilize not only the space, but the educational rooms, too. And as you already heard, there's some really cool things. If you've not been to the Franklin Pierce Farm, please let us know, and we will get you out there. I've got extra gloves and shovels to get you ready to help out. Next slide. Our Goss Farm Incubator is one of the few in the entire United States that actually allows gardeners to come in and create their own small business. They come in, we teach them from roots to shoots how to grow and how to get things to your table and our tables. This is an opportunity for us to actually teach folks not just how to plant the seed, but how to actually turn the crops over every year, how to rotate crops. And then, also, we learn in turn what crops work best from other cultures in our own backyards. A lot of the farmers on this site are immigrant farmers who have come here looking for a place to be and a place to grow. And we've given them the opportunity to teach us how to be, and we've all grown together. We have 12 farmers right now out at this farm, and we're looking at expanding that farm. So, hopefully, you'll be hearing from us soon as we work again with WSU Extension to come up with different opportunities to increase the success that we've had out there. Next slide, please. Our urban farm site is a really unique site. I like to say that this takes the dump to a whole new level. So, sometimes we say life kind of takes us down into the dumps, but this is actually a site that we have just outside the Tacoma Dump that we have actually started farming. This is a small community farm that is just tucked away. You probably couldn't find it unless, you know, we gave you the actual address, because I know I couldn't find it until I had the actual address. Somebody had told me kind of where it was. I tried to drive around, and finally, Erica, who manages the farm, said, "I think you're in the wrong spot." I said, "I think you are correct." I was on the other side of the dump site. This is a site, though, that we've been lucky enough to work with the City of Tacoma and Tegro and other organizations to actually come into these sites and redo an area that people left just to go to the wayside. And we said, "You know what? We can actually grow food out there." So, we've been growing food there with a couple of different farmers, and we actually had the SOW program that was also out there last year, which is a holistic gardening program that teaches us how to connect with not just the land, but with our own lives and with everything that we are dealing with and with our own traumas, and how to grow through those things. Next slide, please. So, one of the beautiful things about the work that we get to do is that we get to expand on funding that we actually get through the county council. So, we have been given something called Rates and Charges. It's an ordinance that you folks passed about 10 years ago to help support us and help give us stable funding. With those rates and charges, we've been able to use that money to actually expand our money. So, we are also growing money for our region. This year, we were awarded, from the Russell Family Foundation, $500,000 worth of a grant. Kristin did an amazing job to get this grant. She has really fostered a relationship with the Russell Family Foundation over the last 15 years so that we can bring money in and again, expand that money throughout our community. With this money, we know that we are going to be reaching into the Parkland areas and other areas within our communities that we know are food deserts so that we can help make sure that fresh food gets into the hands of everyone who needs it. Next slide, please. This slide is only a small portion of all the other activities we get to do with Harvest Pierce County. But we do have many classes that you can find online. We do an edible gardens class. Every year, we do an annual seed swap, which is whatever seeds you had left from last year, bring them on in, and we share them out with everybody. And then, you go home and you can plant those seeds in your own garden. I don't know about you, but I get awfully excited every spring, and I maybe overspend for what my beds can actually hold for my seeds. And so, I use... for what my beds can actually hold for my seeds, and so I usually have even 15 to 20 seeds left over. And I kind of call this the loaves and fishes of the Seeds Program, because it's like the loaves and fishes. You bring your little bit, everybody brings a little bit, and it turns into a whole community that's fed together. One of the other things that we are working on that has been actually a little bit of a challenge for us is our AmeriCorps program. I should be able to say that. I've said it a lot in the last couple of months. We were one of the groups that actually got hit by the federal government, and we were told to send our AmeriCorps members home. We were told that we couldn't work with them anymore. So we shifted very quickly, and we found different jobs for them to do so that we made sure that every single one of our AmeriCorps members stayed on staff and had their own food in their own pot, in their own refrigerators. And then we also used some of the food and produce from our gleaning to help feed not only our AmeriCorps members, but many others, too. That being said, we are hopefully looking forward to having more AmeriCorps members come into this community to help us continue and expand our farming program. And I'm excited to share that one of our AmeriCorps members, who has been with us for two years, has offered to come and speak with you all today, too, to share their passion on the work that they get to do. So I'm going to introduce Lex to actually share about their program with Harvest Pierce
Hello, Council. I don't have any slides, so it'll just stay on this last one, but my name is Lex Renard, and I've had the privilege, as Dana said, of working with the Pierce Conservation District, specifically as Harvest Pierce County's AmeriCorps, as the gleaning specialist. I won't be talking about the gleaning program that much. My focus is mainly on what we do with the Farm at Franklin Pierce. I kind of fell into this job after moving here a few years ago, and I've become extremely passionate and kind of a number one fan of what we do. Just a little bit of background about me, I come from poverty and a lot of food insecurity, and I've always loved connecting to people through food, and I've been wanting to pivot my career towards urban agriculture, so it was a perfect opportunity. Recently this year, upon departure of an employee, I kind of snagged the chance to manage the seed library that we have. We actually have two, but the main one is at the Farm at Franklin Pierce. If you've ever been there and you're kind of walking past the new building, there's a little white shed that says Seed Library on it, and that's what I do. I've actually started to streamline and expand some of the programming because since it started, I believe in 2022, there's a lot of very loyal people who are there. I believe we have over 300 people who have signed up to be a part of the Seed Library. But since a lot of our focus is community sufficiency, you know, many hands make light work, as it was said earlier, I've started working with our comms department to do some more educational and promotional material to not only know that our seed library exists and to catenact to our other programming, but to encourage donating excess seeds, old seeds. And my personal passion is seed saving, because typically if you save seeds from the ones that are successfully grown here, they have a higher chance of growing here. And, you know, with food instability going on right now, grocery prices, you know, having guaranteed plants that could grow in the backyard is great. My term is coming to an end in July, and I will be contracting with HPC for the rest of the season until about September. But I wanted to find ways to continue to stay involved, or as I joke, to keep annoying them. But so I, when the Farm at Franklin Pierce Community Garden came up, I volunteered to not only join it, but become the coordinator. We have about 10 to 12 gardeners right now, and actually six more beds will be opening up soon. I'm trying to get QR codes and some advertisements for waitlists, but currently there is a sign that I made that's on the shed at the Farm at Franklin Pierce, if anyone's interested. But we have about 10 to 12 farmers, most of which are immigrants, and they are growing almost farmer-style for their communities. This is the first time I've been able to be a part of a garden, but community is one of my biggest passions, especially through food. And we had a weeding party a couple of weeks ago, and everyone was harvesting some of the crops that were ready and just sharing with everyone. A lot of the gardeners are really passionate about wanting to try and share their excess in the community fridge that's at the Farm at Franklin Pierce. I really think there's only like one program we have that doesn't do partnerships with the Farm at Franklin Pierce, so it's become kind of like my second home and my favorite place. But as someone who is newly trying to break into this field and is very passionate about food security, I really just wanted to thank the farm or the Franklin Pierce School District for even having this. It is an incredible site, and it's an incredible hub for community. And as someone who moved here just about three years ago, working as an AmeriCorps for Harvest Pierce County and with the Farm at Franklin Pierce has kind of snowballed me into being able to have direct action with community and getting really rooted in with everything. And, you know, I am hopeful that their AmeriCorps program will be reinstated, honestly, without my position and hopefully a secondary farm position. Harvest Pierce County can't do, you know, as much work as they do. And if you have any power in that, you know, vote for having some AmeriCorps come back. But yeah, I, one of the things I'm also doing with the Seed Library is developing a toolkit to help start seed libraries. A lot of local library branches have been asking. It's a bit of a longer-term project that I'm working on, but the goal is to have libraries, community organizations, or really just anyone who has, you know, property that they want to do, to be able to start a seed library and manage it in a way that works for them. It has done really well. We have a satellite location at the Tacoma, the new and improved Tacoma Tool Library, and it has been doing so well, even with the limited hours, on the second floor of the Tacoma Library Main Branch. People love to save their seeds and donate their excess seeds, and I actually was able to do my first garden plot with mostly seeds donated, because seeds are expensive, and an AmeriCorps site, then, is not a lot. So, and my garden plot, if you happen to visit the Farm at Franklin Pierce, it's the one with the really tall, purple, lacy fascilia flowers and the pea trellis. I was not expecting to have such a successful garden this summer for my first time ever, but I couldn't have done it without the help of not only my, what I've learned through working with Harvest Pierce County and the community connections I've made, but also the Seed Library. So during my time with Harvest Pierce County, I'm trying to put as much back into it to streamline it and make it more effective for the community and for everyone that works for it, and then, you know, continue to be a part of whatever I can with the community garden. But yeah, as soon as Kristin had mentioned that this was a thing, I kind of cornered her and said, "Let me talk about everything," because I'm very passionate and very appreciative, and I need everyone to know the awesome work that we do. And just a little promotion as well for the gleaning program, since that's one of the easier things to sign up with. We currently do gleaning harvest with the Farm at Franklin Pierce on Tuesday and Friday mornings. Once they get their student staff, it'll most likely just be Tuesday mornings. There's usually a waitlist, so check it fast. You can go to piercepiercecountingleaningproject.org, look at the harvest list, check it multiple times a day. There are a lot of very passionate volunteers. We have one who's probably done more gleens than all of the gleaning program employees, and he's fantastic. But it has changed my life, and I know it's changed a lot of lives of the volunteers who've become more involved in our programming. And I hope to continue to do work when I'm not with HPC and hope to see a lot of people come out to a lot of our programming. And join Farm Foundations. That is, is great. I graduated last year. It was very enriching. But thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it, and thank you, Chair Yonbe, thank you, Council. It's my first time doing a public speech like this, so I'm a little nervous, but yes, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Lex, and thank Dana for that. Any questions from up here or comments? Nope, all right. Oh.
I happened to be at a Blue Zones Walk in Bresman Forest, Breezeman Forest, everybody, correct me, this weekend, and one of the constituents of mine that was walking with me, which is one of the great things that Blue Zones does, it brings you together with community members that you didn't know, and they wondered why we didn't have more fruit trees or nut trees inside the park that could then be part of the gleaning project. And I wondered if that has been a conversation with the Pierce County Parks District.
I have a bit of an answer for that. I know we've just expanded some of our programming, and the program manager, and Dana can expand on this, but with my knowledge, the program manager is currently trying to make the programming with our contract hires more equitable, and we're getting a kind of map set up, a GIS map of all the fruit trees and the pest and disease within the county. That's a pretty large problem, and I know that's kind of been the focus. We have about 300 registered sites, and on a good season, we get to about half of them. So I think we're trying to mainly focus on maintaining, but I believe that might be something that's on the table down the line. We're trying to address the issues that come with fruit trees, so that way, when and if that does happen, there's systems set in place to make sure there's not food rotting everywhere or pest and disease spreading even more than it already is.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. All right. Ms. Waterland for our last presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your final presentation. You have three individuals from the Making a Difference Foundation, specifically the Feeding Our Future program. Andrea Blue, the president and CEO of the Making a Difference Foundation, is here with us today, as well as Jolene Cook, who is the program manager of the Feeding Our Future program, and special guest Tracy Gichuru, who is here as a student of the program. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. All right, Andrea, you can take it away.
Great. Good evening. I am Andrea Blue, president and CEO of Making a Difference Foundation, and I just want to start by saying that we are the proud owners of Eloise's Cooking Pot over in East Tacoma, which is also in a food desert. I wanted to start with that because most people do not know that we are the owners of Eloise's. Most people know Eloise's Cooking Pot, but doesn't know that it's actually owned by Making a Difference Foundation. So Making a Difference was started in 2003. Our mission is to make a difference in people's lives, one person at a time. We do that through providing housing for homeless veterans. We also do that through food insecurity, Eloise's, and we also provide scholarships to over 100-plus students throughout the United States of America. We work in Washington State, California, and in Texas. But I'm here today to talk about our new baby, which is Feeding Our Future. And I just want to do some backstory on, first off, by saying thank you. Thank you for continually supporting Eloise's Cooking Pot. Eloise's is the largest food bank here in Pierce County, with the largest delivery system here in Pierce County. We serve over 75,000 people per month, giving out about 1.7 million pounds of food per month. We have our brick and mortar, which is located on McKinley Avenue. We also do an emergency food in partnership with the State of Tacoma at the Tacoma Dome every Wednesday. We have 24 mini food banks located throughout Pierce County, because we believe people should get food where they're currently located and not have to travel to McKinley Hill, plus we don't have the capacity on McKinley. We also deliver to over 3,000 people per week. We have three mobiles. We have 15 fleet vehicles, a new delivery center, which is 27,000 square feet, foot, yeah, feet, over in East Tacoma, and we're in the process of under construction with three more food banks, the new no-cost market, which will be going 100 feet to the north of the current food bank, which will be a 5,000-square-foot market, along with a second food bank, which is called Julia's Place, that will be located with Mercy's new housing project, and then another food bank that will be going on 66 and McKinley Avenue in the Hillsdale project. So we're pretty busy, but in the midst of all of this, we birthed, thanks to you, Feeding Our Future. Feeding Our Future is a program that came out of an issue that we had with Eloise's. We had some young youth who are consistently volunteering at the food bank, but found themselves in a little bit of a issue, I would say. An issue, unfortunately, they were, I'm also a lawyer. They were growing marijuana and did not have license and were not the appropriate age, but they found time to volunteer in the midst of all of this at the food bank. What we decided to do was make a deal with the prosecutor that we would do a diversion program for them and see if it actually would work. One of the things that we realized, all the skill sets they were using, too, quite successfully, they did, were actually pretty successful in growing marijuana, was all the same skill sets they could use, actually going with microgreens. And one of the issues that they did not know or did not understand, that it was obviously less risk, the entry amount was much cheaper, it was also legal, and it was far more profitable to grow these microgreens. So that began a project for us, a small pilot that said, "Hey, instead of having them go through the system, we will bring them over to Eloise and teach them how to grow." Lo and behold, what we realized is that it worked far, much better than we thought it did. Not only were they successful on this particular pilot, it also impacted their homes. Many of them were primary breadrunners within their house, so they were engaging in the behavior, but they also had issues around schools. So what we did was then went to their schools and asked their schools to be their first customer, so that can improve their attendance at the school, because they didn't have, you know, time to run their entrepreneur stuff and also attend the school. But because the schools were purchasing their products, they would then go to school to make sure that their product was doing what was supposed to be doing there. So that became the birth of the project. So I was talking with Farmer Council member Campbell about this brainchild, and asked, I was like, "Hey, I really would like to do a pilot." And so I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, for investing $300,000 in the pilot, and which Jolene Cook is going to talk to you about today and the results of that pilot. I also wanted to send a special thank you, because in the heart of COVID-19, Pierce County really stepped up, and what I would say showed out for Eloise. Eloise would not be here today. The food bank would not have made it through COVID-19 had you guys not came and supported it with volunteerism, but also making sure that Eloise had everything it needed to have to be able to survive. Because what people did not understand, that at the day before COVID happened, Eloise was only serving 15,000 people. Within 72 hours, we had a problem. We had 30,000 people standing on the ground, asking for food, and we didn't know what to do. We had one employee, everybody else was employees, everybody else was volunteers, and all the volunteers had disappeared, rightfully so, people didn't know what was happening. And I just want to say thank you. We're standing 15 years strong, we're standing 15 years strong because of you, because you guys cited show up for the community and to continue to feed the people and community. So before I cry, I'm going to have Jolene Cook come up and tell you about Feeding Our
Thank you, Andrea. Thank you, Andrea, and to our county council members, we appreciate your support, and I am, I am grateful, because this program not only changed the lives of the future, but it changed my life as well. Can we go to the next slide, please? Okay, so this is a mission in history. This is, you can go to the next slide. This is Andrea. But why farming? There were another set of slides. And the reason that I say that is because I put a lot of time into making sure the students were, Tracy is one of our students here, and she will be presenting. But I'll just, okay, we can just continue on. But why farming, right? Why farming for these, these children in Tacoma in the food desert? Why farming for these children in Tacoma, in the food desert? Microgreens are very simple, and they don't require a lot of time to harvest, from, you know, sowing them, from actually planting the seed to harvesting. And it doesn't require land, right? So this is something that the students can do in the spaces that they live. It's a program for children 16 to 25, students 16 to 25. It's a 20-week session, which is roughly a little over five months, and with hydroponic microgreen farming in mind. We have both, we have both classroom instruction and a growth lab. So in the classroom instruction, we give them business and entrepreneur leadership courses. And then their grow lab is where they actually tend to the crops. Are we going to have the slides? Oh, okay, okay, okay. So they learn to sow the seeds. They grow, they harvest, they package, they ship, and they distribute. Oh, but those are a couple, okay. Yeah, the program pillars. Okay, so the kids learn how, like I said, the full market cycle. They sow the seeds, they grow, harvest, package, ship, and distribute to Eloise's, back to Eloise's Food Bank. Why is this significant? Because the kids, although they're learning this, right, they don't really think about feeding their community until they actually saw their product in the soil. You know, we work with them. We give them business coaching, branding, and the marketing of the products. And it opens their eyes to new careers that they can, that they can, that they can exercise when these children are often the ones who are forgotten about. Next slide, please. Okay. And during the course of this five months, a lot of things during the pilot happened. Circumstances happened to our students that we didn't anticipate. And so with regards to that, like their mental and physical health and wellness was something that we, that we saw on a regular basis. We developed relationships with these children. But those were things that we also addressed in the course of the program. We had, we had visitors from Senator Pat O'Meara's office, Representative Strickland's office, and several of the members of City Council, Tacoma City Council, to show, to introduce the students to mentors and to direction for their civic duties. Next slide, please. Let me see. Okay. Well, the curriculum. This is the curriculum. I'm going to blow through the curriculum a little bit. So in the first, the first weeks, one through four, we have orientation, we have norm buildings, where we teach, we teach the children about hydroponics and growing microgreens, but we also establish norms. One of the norms is an exercise that I do with the students. It's 13. 13 positive strokes to negate one negative because these children have a lot of adult problems. And it's unfair. It's unfair that these kids are, you know, a victim of their circumstances. But we try and teach them, while we're giving them curriculum, to address their mental health so they can come and be present in a safe space. Next slide, please. With the business fundamentals in week five through eight, we go through exercises about their personal branding, the branding of the burnt businesses that they want to create. We actually go to the Secretary of State, Washington Secretary of State website. We have a search for them on their names, whether or not they're availability, in efforts to get them to understand what it is to market their product. Next, next slide, please. In weeks nine through 12, the safety food and certification. So this is really important. The food handlers card. This is an exercise that the kids go through, which also makes them employable. So they get a certification. That way, when they leave the program, they have tools that will make them a little more employable. So, yeah, in week nine to 12, they go through the first food certification, and all of the students have that. One of our, the reason that it's significant is because one of our students, after the conclusion of the program, was so proud. He had his food handler certificate, and he got himself another job at a fast food restaurant. But he did so because the income that he received from that stipend changed, changed the quality of his family's life. The next slide, please. So in week 13 through 16, we do, we prepare them for the exit from the program by doing personal branding and resume writing, you know, having them practice their communication skills, getting up and actually using their voice. So as we coach them with the business coaching, entrepreneurial coaching, a part of it, like, is for the children to find their voice. A lot of them sat, you know, didn't fully participate because they were unsure about their voice. But when we had them actually practice and speak amongst each other in a safe space, it was really amazing what the kids came out with. Next, next slide, please. And in week 17 through 20, with a community engagement and community engagement and volunteering. So the kids, at this point, they are sowing the seeds. They're harvesting them, you know, on a regular basis. But they actually package them and send them to the food bank. And we give them opportunities to volunteer. We teach them what volunteerism is. And it's a way to give back to the community. Next slide. So we, I'm going to talk about the participant support services, like the stipends. The stipends were really huge. Like I said, a lot of the families that were served became to depend on the financial support. The mentorship during the curriculum, we introduced them to various people, partners in the community, bankers and mentors and public speakers that let them know that they were seen. The resource, the access to tools, those are things that we have, like I said, the, giving them resumes and access to the tools, like the food handler certificate are things that really went a long, a long, a long way with the students. And I put counseling on here because a lot of things that we didn't anticipate were that a lot of our, a lot of the members of the cohorts were impacted by traumatic events in the community. And that not only affected that individual student, but it impacted the cohort. And we had students calling on other members of the cohort because they noticed that someone was missing. And that truly was a sign of community that the kids are learning to not only feed the future literally, but to also feed their mental and physical, the mental and physical challenges that they have. Next slide, please. Expected, expected outcomes. The food safety certification, being safe is one of the things. Their resume development, the communication skills, building their communication skills, and also their confidence in being able to speak in a public forum is one of the, one of the outcomes that we're actually going to display for you momentarily. But like I said, the community impact. Having these cohorts, like, look out for each other and sharing resources, sharing resources that they have amongst each other, whether it be transportation, picking each other up for rides, you know, and checking just on one another was really, it was a fundamental win for the program. Next slide, please. Long-term outcomes. So as the program has wrapped up, a lot of the cohorts are still keeping in contact with one another, checking on each other, and also sharing resources. Amongst folks in the cohort, there was a request from the students to be able to, you know, share this with other family members. And, you know, I explained to them that this was a pilot. This is the first time that we've done the program. But absolutely, I will speak and advocate on your behalf to continue this, to continue developing partnerships and collaborations so that the kids would have a better life situation. Next slide, please. Program, definitely, okay. So the majority of the participants were BIPOC youth. There were a few that we served that were non-BIPOC, but they are still members of our community and benefited from the services that we provided. There was a lot of, there were a lot of few food insecure households. Couple of the students came to the program and, you know, there was food there. We fed them. And as, as the students were talking, you know, there were some students who admitted that this was the only food that they were going to be eating. That touched my heart, and it moved me, and it made it, made it more impactful that we were feeding, we were addressing a need that the community has. Next slide, please. Partnerships that made it work. We did have, as we're teaching the children, you know, entrepreneurial tips, we had partnerships, you know, that helped them with financial literacy. That's something that's overlooked. But every single one of the students got a checking account, right? It may not seem like it's a big deal to any of the council members here, but in order for them to be successful and take control of their life, having financial independence was critical. And that was something that was, something that I learned along the way that, you know, financial literacy was a key, was a key tool that they needed access to. The next slide, please. Key of achievements. I am very proud of this because when you have a group 16 to 25, there are not a lot of entrepreneurial minds that are already versed and ready to go. But of 32, of the 32, three did successfully, are successful. In the state of Washington, they have developed, excuse me, they've gotten their UBI number, and they have their business license. Four, four of the students graduated. One of them got a GED. Three are in the JC next year, who didn't, who weren't planning on it. Six of the students received scholarships from the Making a Difference Foundation as part of that transition. I am very proud of that because of the first time they heard or the first time they asked about the assignment, they were unwilling. And there were, then there was one that refused altogether. But giving them access to tools that will change the impact, the impact, their life circumstances was something that they're eternally grateful for. The next slide, please. Building a healthier community through farming. Okay. Yes, they can grow, they can grow, and they can grow at home without any land. Many of them are growing microgreens at home, and I'm very proud of that. But this is, you know, really about leadership training, advocacy, and job readiness. You know, whether they want to go and get a job, we support that. But also about having an entrepreneurial mind and being their own, their own, their own boss. Next slide. Okay. Early interventions. So for these, for these students, this group of people, 18 to 25, they experience some of the steepest turns or declines in healthy behaviors when something goes wrong. That is what, that is what the 13 positive norm that we, the 13 positives norm that we have, we tell the kids, whenever there is one negative thing, it takes 13 positives to negate that one negative situation. Changing their mindset and giving them tools for mental health has, that has long-lasting impacts, especially when their current circumstances are not the healthiest. That's all I'll say. Next slide, please. This is, actually, can you go back one? I'd like to highlight several critical observations from our students, focusing on the impact of the support they receive through our program and challenges they face. Many of the students experience significant life changes, including food insecurity, housing transition or instability, and responsibilities as primary caregivers in multi-generational households. These students were not only pursuing their educational goals, but they were serving as essential support systems for their families. The stipend provided through the program became a vital source of income, not just for the students, but the entire household. In many cases, families grew to rely on it to meet their basic needs. Additionally, the food, the food that was provided through the food bank became a primary nutrition source for several families, helping to prevent hunger in difficult times. Beyond the direct aid, we also work to help students develop life and community norms, talked about that, and acknowledge the, and address circumstances that were outside of their control. Building resilience and confidence that they could accomplish any goal. So again, the program outcomes, 32, 32 unique individuals were served. Three students obtained business licenses in the state of Washington. Six students launched non-microgreen businesses. Like, and I just want to note that one of the students earned about $2,000 a month in revenue in her own business, which was not microgreens. And even though that was her own business, we still supported her by giving her the necessary tools, you know, for her to be successful as, once she leaves the program. Four, I witnessed four students graduate from high school. And I am very proud that they, they took those steps and stayed committed to the goals that they made to themselves. Three are currently enrolled in junior college. Two are transitioning to a four-year university. And one of them earned their GED. Two students also obtained their driver's license. So one of the things that was uncovered was that there were students who were driving vehicles, they had vehicles, but they didn't have a driver's license to go along with it. And, and we pushed them, right? Like, you can't, this is, this is not compliant. And, and they gave, they gave us their word that they would get their driver's license, and they did. And that's just one less thing, one less problem, one less circumstance that they would have to deal with. These accomplishments reflect both on the resilience of our students and the importance of the continued support. These young people are doing all of this while navigating real survival. Some are trying to graduate while making their fam, while making sure that their families eat. And the stipend they receive through the program, it's not just extra cash. It's often the only reliable income in their household. The food donated by the food bank, that's what's keeping their entire families from growing hungry. And when you see these students with food that they're feeding their families, you know, I get feedback from the, from, from the parents and the grandparents. And the grandparents sometimes are the people, the caregivers who are taking care of the children. And they are eternally grateful. You know, because these are solutions that are coming to their households that they otherwise wouldn't have. So they are doing the impossible with almost nothing and still choosing to lead. I'd like to close by letting you hear directly from one of our youths.
Tracy Gichu.
Because their voices are not just a part of this program. They're the future of this city. Thank you for your time and your ongoing commitment. Bye, Tracy.
Hello, hello, hello. I'm Tracy Gichu and I'm 17 years old. When I first joined Feeding Our Future, it was mainly for job opportunities. I had been applying to anything I could find for the longest time and happened to come across this one. Although I originally signed up to be a farmer, I ended up gaining so much more than just experience in sowing seeds. I found a sense of community and more importantly, a deeper sense of self. Being a part of this program taught me how to speak up, not just for myself, but also for my peers, which was something I wasn't always comfortable doing before. A little bit nervous. Volunteering at Eloise's Cooking Pot and connecting with my community around me helped me strengthen my voice even more. And seeing the food we made being distributed to the local families showed me firsthand that the work we're doing truly matters. Even though we're a pilot program now, the impact this had on me is powerful. And it's only a glimpse of what we can do for others. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tracy. That was a great, great presentation. Angelina and Andrea, we're so fortunate that you are in our community and that you are here tonight to help share the great work that Making a Difference Foundation and your organizations are doing for our community, not just in District 5, but around the county. So greatly appreciated. Andrea, do you want to say anything else?
I just want to reiterate. Angelina's a little bit humble. We do have one young lady who is actually making $10,000 a month. And her and her twin sister managed to make sure they graduated with, both of their parents are deceased. And they're 18 years of age. And I'm extremely proud of them. They stood in the program for the 20 weeks and had a lot of challenges. But I'm extremely, I feel like I'm a proud parent of 32 kids right now because we have them. We have also at least six other people who have birth businesses in the 20 weeks. We have one that's working on, they're owning their first home. I have a pilot. So this program, like literally a flying pilot. Yeah, we have one of those two in this group. And I've been extremely impressed around people finding their way and finding their voices, but also finding a dream and holding on to it with everything that they have, but trusting us enough to know that. They have a group of people that believe in them, that will stand with them, that stood with them and will continue to stand with them for a lifetime to make sure that their dream become reality. So I thank you guys truly for believing in this program. I just thank you from the bottom of my heart because you truly impacted 32 children's lives. If you want to ever know if you've made a difference, come visit this program on a Saturday or on a Tuesday and see the kids in this program. So I thank you.
Any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? And I will say that we appreciated the invitation for Councilmember Ayala and myself to come and speak. Oh, Julie, you wanted to say something?
I did, I did. So the reason that I asked if there was another slide was because your slide was in an updated version of our deck. And you sharing your stories, right? And the kids being able to, excuse me, the students being able to ask you questions in a safe place was so impactful. Because they were like, you know what? I can do that. I think I could do that. I can, and it was turning on lights, you know, that like you would never know the questions that they asked me after you guys left. And also being able to give them tools, right? And resources and encouraging them, you know, go and talk to your city council members. Having them, having a youth, this is a minor. She's, yeah, she's 16, you know, 16 with, oh, yes, oh, yes, she just turned, sorry, she just turned 17. But having, you know, having our future right here, coming to this podium and participating in our civic duties, like, it is incredible. And she is an incredible advocate for the rest of the students and is connected with them and checks on them. And it's a part of a community that I couldn't, it's wildly successful. And I could never have even imagined that they would be so committed to one another. So thank you. Honestly, I am, you know, you're changing a lot of lives and I'm grateful. Thank you. And this is, wait, and this is another student, right? Another one of the, one of the students who has a stand-up business, right? Who was coming here to support after work, right? Who picked up one of the other students to make sure that they got here. Because transportation is a challenge, you know? And transportation, yes. Transportation was a challenge for a lot of the students, but we figured out a way to get them here, right? And it made all the difference that they had a safe space two times a week. Two times a week. To keep the commitment to themselves and the dream. So thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, so we'll move on to item eight, which is community forum. Each person can speak for up to three minutes. As an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any topic that is of significance to or affecting Pierce County government. There's a three-minute limit. We will have a timer posted. Please state your name and if you would like it on the record and address all comments to me, the chair. And I will start with those in the room. So if anybody has any comments or questions, please come over to the microphone so that we can hear you and just let us know your name. And if you'd like it on the record, address all comments to me. And if anybody would like to speak after, please get in a line. Don't all come at once.
Hello. It works. I'm Teresa Evans. I'm in, I'm sorry if I say your name, I'm Brian. Good, 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 I did, okay. I'm in your district, so, you know, thank you for having this. I just wanted to say a little bit. And I liked your presentations you have with the Blue Zone Project in the harvest Pierce County and Making a Difference Foundation with Eloise's Cooking Pot. We go to the food bank and we enjoyed some dried blueberries on our hiking and camping this last week. So thank you. And I go by the community garden that Dana was talking about, my Tacoma Dome, because my aunt lived across the street from that when she was there, before I was born. And I say, doing, Kari, mode of Margaret. I love Aunt Margaret. She's not there anymore. I'm working on my healing, my mobility and cognition. My mobility, I walk outside every day doing care that aware of glory. The We Bike Program, the refund, I got my bike just a couple days ago. So it's outside your hall, recharging so I can get home. So thank you. And thank you for having this, for growing good food and supporting that within our communities and for being here in yourselves. So have a good evening.
Thanks, Teresa. All right, next.
Hello, my name is Sheila Nguyen. And I'm not necessarily here to represent the groups that I am involved in, but I would like for everyone to know that we are here in the Summit Waller community. And one of those that I am involved in is the Waller Road Grange. My husband and I just got back as delegates for the Washington State Grange Conference Meeting. And Washington State has the most granges of any state in the country, 250. What I would like to do is extend an invitation to you to come to see the granges and to come and find out about those things that we can offer. We are a husbandry organization founded on some Masonic principles. And we care very much about our communities and we would like to be involved. We are involved with Waller Road Elementary and Pierce Conservation District. Thank you very much. Has been helping us with the children's garden. It is so popular that we can't facilitate all the kids that want to be part of the garden club. But we're making a difference and we're growing it. So there's that as well. Also, the Summit Waller Community Association provides a space and place for the community to come forward and ask questions about development and what's going on in the community. And we, both groups have Facebook accounts and you can come on there and join and participate. And I would like to say thank you to all the organizations that are here tonight that help the children and the elderly and the folks that are on the precipice of some very difficult situations where there's no food in the refrigerator at the end of the month and there is no gasoline to be had to get to work. And you wonder how to do that. I want to thank the county and all the representatives who help facilitate these projects and these programs because they are very important. And we are a community and we are interconnected. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheila. I promise there's enough time.
All right. I just wanted to say quickly that I loved learning and hearing about so many wonderful people and organizations positively impacting our community. My name is Jen Bosworth and I live, work, play, serve, and exercise in this community here. And since this topic came up tonight, I wanted to share with you a memory of my childhood school in the Puyallup School District. I attended Fruitland Elementary School. And one of the best memories I had and long-lasting impacts that this memory had on me was that the school implemented a bicycle rodeo in my childhood days. And it was, for those of you who don't know what that is, it's where the students would ride their bikes to school once a year. And then in the after-school program or after our classes were done, they would redo the entire playground into a road. And there were businesses and they would put a working intersection light and the Puyallup Police Department would be a part of that. And we would learn to ride our bikes safely. And that has had a lasting impact on me. And so recently, I was hired by the Franklin Pierce School District and I had the opportunity to talk to the possibility of running that program with Krista Timms last year. And we were going to talk about it this summer, about implementing that. I know it's not happening anymore in the Puyallup School District, or at least at the little school my kids go to, which was, is still Fruitland. They still go to the school I went to as a kid. And knowing that we have these trails going in, such as Pipeline, and it's kind of, it's really important that our kids learn bicycle safety. While the trail itself is a wonderful, safe place to bike, they still have to access it on busy roads. And you mentioned the 72nd intersection by Waller Road. They still have to, the bicyclists still have to stop and wait for traffic safely and travel on busy roads to access that trail. And so I was just hoping that when the opportunity arises and within your spheres of influence, if you could promote bicycle safety programs in the schools, I think that would be something that's really important, especially the more that we promote active transportation and we put in bike lanes and so forth. And so I hope we continue to implement safety as well as the infrastructure for active transportation purposes. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Yes, good evening. My name is Greg Gardner and I'm a local citizen here, have been for some time. And it was really refreshing to come into this meeting and listen to what's going on around me. Very, very encouraging. And it's a lot of good things. I was very taken back and it was good to hear that. And I would like to ask one question. And that is of concern, I think, to many people here in the area. And if there's any updates on what's happening regarding the Spanaway Loop Road project?
This is formatted basically as a, you can give us information. We'll try to get staff to come over afterwards and address that.
Okay, well, that's all I have to say. Just a question that I had there. But it was a great meeting and thank you all. I really enjoyed it myself. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I'll make sure that we have staff come over and help address that for you. Come on up.
My name is Deborah Baines. Obviously, live in this community. Live on 96th. Been riding my horses out here for 50 years. And my family live out here. I have two grandchildren I'm raising. And 96th, as an example, has turned into Interstate 96th. And 84th Street has turned into Interstate 84th. And Waller and Canyon, et cetera. And I have this huge concern. It's been years. And I love the police. I do. I love the police, all of them. But they'd never pull anybody over. I bet you nobody in this room can tell me the last time they've seen anybody pulled over for speeding. And it's getting worse and worse. And I'm scared to have my children ride their bikes anywhere around here, even in the bike lanes. And there aren't enough bike lanes for kids. And this is a community. And most of us have children or grandchildren or livestock, especially in the Summit, you know, Midland area. But it's just getting so terribly dangerous to take a walk, to ride a bike, or to ride a horse. So I just wanted to mention that. I don't know, I know you're not telling us answers today, what our, you know, goal is, but it's a huge concern. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Nancy Basket. I am a third-generation Midlandite. Welcome to Midland. Just for those who may not know that we're not Parkland. Sorry, little pride of Midland here. The fire station named after the Basket family because it was where we had our lumber mill. But my main concern is, I don't know, that you have part of the information, is about the bridge going from Portland Avenue to I-5. I have to go every day, work in Renton to get back. Even if I cut over to I-5, because when you have a backup, you have to go back onto I-5. You have a whole blockage there because there's no way to get back over the Puyallup Bridge. You spent the money to build half of it, then immediately closed in the other half of it. And it's been sitting there. We watched all this great work happening on the 167, but we can't even use I-5 to go to help the problem with the freeway, I-5. So I really would appreciate that you look into that it would stop a lot of the problems of I-5 by opening up that bridge gives another alternative to get over the river. So I would really appreciate you looking at, is there a way that we can open it or even have a deadline or a... or even have a deadline or a goal when it might be anybody's doing anything? But thank you, and welcome to Midland. We really appreciate you coming. And to be honest with you, I came, I knew you were coming. I came home from work, took me an hour and a half to get from Renton here because I did I-5. I turned on the TV, PC 22, saw you, and said, you know, I think I really need to be here. So I set the TV down and came. And you have done such wonderful work here. I also run the 4-H program for King County. So I appreciate all the work you're doing here. But that's my thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, for making the trip all the way. Anyone else in the audience? Or we can go to our virtual audience. Anyone online? Mr. Winesberry?
Yes, for any members of the public who should provide comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And it looks like we have one handed this time. Jennifer, please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Jennifer, are you there? Mr. Winesberry?
Yeah, her mic's unmuted, and I see her talking. I'm not sure what's going on with her.
Well, I don't want to interrupt or not let her speak, but I think she's having difficulties?
Yeah, I'm not sure, sir. She's coming off mute, but obviously, we're not hearing anything.
Well, is there anyone else on the virtual audience?
That's the only hand, sir. And there are no hands, chair.
Well, Jennifer, if you continue to have issues, you can always feel free to write the Pierce County Council or my office at b r y a n dot y a m b e at piercecountywa.gov. And we'll make sure that council, everyone gets your question and comments. So I'm sorry that we're having technical difficulties. All right. Well, next, we have a giveaway. This is unusual, so my colleagues, don't be alarmed. We have a Soundgrew 50-pound bag of Soundgrew for your garden because we're going with the garden theme. And so I'm going to draw a name. Everyone can see that I'm not just grabbing. Okay. Oh, well, Jen Bosworth. You are the winner of a 50-pound bag of Soundgrew. But also, we have two extras to give away. So if you didn't get the 50-pound bag of Soundgrew, you can get a lovely Soundgrew hat. And so this was not taxpayer dollars, by the way. This was donated by our lovely partners.
No gift of public funds.
No gift of public funds. Okay. Mary Ballard? Ring a bell? Mary, okay. Mary, you will get a lovely hat. We'll make sure that you get it. And then one more. Lisa Olson. Yay, okay. Clearly, Councilmember Morrell is looking at eyeing the box, so just keep it away from him. We'll be fine. All right. So before I close, I wanted to thank everybody, each and every one of you and all of our partners for taking the time to come out to the District Five meeting. It really means a lot to be able to have your presence and hear from many for your feedback and concerns. You know, as the District Five representative, I'm very heartened and feel honored to represent all of you if you do live in District Five. And I'm also honored to serve you as your Pierce County Councilmember, even if you don't live in my district. So I greatly appreciate you being here. I also want to give a couple of thanks to some other people who helped make tonight possible. Matt Santelli out there in the lobby from our Aging and Disability Resources, who's handing out some bags. And our two deputies, who are always here making sure that we have good coverage in our in-district meetings. The PCTV and radio communications team, who are all around the room, who have helped set up and make sure that our sound system is up to par and everyone can hear us. And my incredible assistant, Kimberly. Where is Kimberly? Oh, right there in the back. Kimberly Lally is my council assistant. So if you live in District Five, you probably will either interface with me or Kimberly. And please let us know if we can help you and answer your questions and make sure that staff gets on that immediately. Again, my colleagues, thank you for coming out to District Five and making my very first in-district meeting, you know, without a go off, without a hitch. And so I really appreciate the staff and my partners for being here. All right. And all right, with that, I'm going to close Community Forum. And with no further business, before the Pierce County Council, this special meeting is adjourned.